I've only done that a couple of times. Yeah, yeah, let's see. Alright, so I'm recording. And. Where's the? What the heck is going on here? I can't find the. I can't find the streaming to YouTube thing. Where's that? Sorry, guys. Bear with me. Security.
Maybe in the screen if you want.
No, thank you. I don't need to be on the screen. They saw that I was here. I'll peek in if I need to.
Running off your phone.
Well, I'll be honest with you guys. I cannot find the. I can't find it.
There's Jess.
Huh? Yes, but my Zoom client updated and I'm in the same pickle here. I can't figure out how to. Stream it to. Stream it to YouTube. So I guess we're gonna forego that for now. It is recording, so it'll be recorded in the cloud. Um, so that Shelley, by the way, Shelley is the new recording secretary for the planning board. Um, and he did our last minutes here. So, alright, we're just gonna move on. I've got it recording and. We're gonna call that good, so. Okay, um, I guess I already called the minute, the meeting to order, so we have some minutes from. The. Hold on a minute, I gotta, I'm juggling too many things. Looks like we have two minutes, one from nine seventeen and one from eleven nineteen. I gotta get to that. I only saw one set of minutes. Did I miss one?
I think they only sent out one.
Okay, alright, so I saw the minutes from eleven nineteen, which was last month's. Do we have a motion on those minutes from eleven nineteen? Nick, Nick moves. Do we have a second?
Did you make a motion there?
Peter, I saw Peter hand. Thank you very much.
Nope, I didn't. I missed that.
Alright, any, um, any discussion about the? Minutes? No? Okay, oh, Kevin, go ahead.
So, um, in the fourth paragraph. I stated, should say, in space. Flux rather than flux.
Which paragraph was that?
The, the, after the outline, the fourth paragraph. I stated a concern for elements of the drawings and applications that may have been influenced.
Yeah, needs a dash. Okay.
Like a space or, yeah.
Something. Yep, okay, great. Anybody else have anything else about the minutes? Alright. Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes from November nineteenth, I'll raise your hand. Alright, that passes. Thank you very much. Um, the next thing on the agenda is the, um, Split Rock. Stillery has applied for a community block grant. Uh, and they. Are trying to gather letters of support from town boards and officials. They've already met and discussed at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. Mary Ellen Barnes from Lincoln County Regional Planning, or whatever they're called now. Uh, she is helping them, um, through the grant process. I spoke with Topher Mallory, one of the owners of Split Rock, and he explained the project to me a little bit. It's to add equipment. So that they can continue to use hand sanitizer. Um, as well as, uh, you know, their, their normal stock and trade goods. So it would be, um, adding to their capacity. Uh, it's, uh, the project is gonna be completely contained within the building envelope itself, so there's no. Um, changes that are gonna be made in terms of. Outdoor storage, uh, you know, or anything that the planning board would necessarily need to review. It's just an expansion of equipment. However, Mary Ellen felt that if. The, uh, planning board was so inclined to produce a letter of support that would help, uh, their application. Uh, through the process, uh, and increase their chances of, of receiving the grant. Uh, so did you all get a copy of the, uh, the draft letter that, that Mary Ellen? Um, sent along for our consideration?
Yes.
Yep.
Any discussion about the letter? Or a motion about it, or whatever?
For twenty grand. Had to take it two thousand dollars during policy, you know? Was it a grant or a loan?
The grant. And who's? Who gives the money to? The state?
Actually, uh, I don't know honestly if it's a part of a federal program or a state program. I'm not, I'm not certain. I didn't ask that question.
Well, it also says they were gonna hire one and one. I, I think it's a good idea. I mean, if it's gonna bring more employment to town. That's what. That's kind of the idea.
I actually sat in on the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday night when they were discussing it with Mary Ellen and, um. I guess they had, uh, whoever the regulatory agency that's, um, distributing the grants and, and, you know, accepting and processing the applications. Have greatly reduced the requirements. For submitting an application for the grant. Um, and one of the things unfortunately that they did do away with was that, um, the. Um, there used to be a requirement, I believe, that if you were gonna hire someone, it had to be from the town. Or the municipality, uh, on, you know, through which, you know, the business exists, so that you could, you know, say that we're benefiting the town directly by hiring. A local, but they got rid of that, so they're gonna hire someone. They may not live in Newcastle is the upshot. Small thing. Well, does anyone have anything else? Any other questions? I, you literally know everything I know now. Um, they just asked us for a letter of support, so we put it on the agenda.
I don't see any reason why we shouldn't support it.
Alright, well, then let's go ahead and I'll make, I'll make a motion to, uh. Have the planning board approve the letter, um, that Mary Ellen drafted for us and, um, you know. And, uh, and we'll just, uh, affix our, our signatures to it or I'll. I guess it says chair.
Yeah, I was saying it.
Okay, alright, all in favor of, of the motion? Alright, that passes. I'll get that done and off to Mary Ellen. Okay, so, next on the agenda, we're continuing the review of Coastal Boat Works expansion at. One one five five US Route One, map two, lot thirty-nine dash zero zero B. Um, last month, we, uh. Reviewed quite a bit, and then we got to a spot where, uh, it was determined that the project is presented needed to be reviewed under the large scale development. Section of the land use ordinance, and at that time, once that was established. Um, we asked, uh, Bucky Holloway, um, the applicant here to. Come back with, um, some more information to address those concerns. We had also identified a couple other. Um, site plan, um, uh, things that were lacking that we wanted a little bit more, um, information about, such as parking and lighting. Excuse me. And so, uh, we are here to continue the review process and. And, 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 and pick up where we left off. So you, you've all received the, uh, the updated, um, paperwork, either digitally or in print. Um, for the proposed expansion, um, of coastal artworks. Um, the, and the narrative that came along that, and everyone's had a chance to review everything?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I think before we, before we dive in, I, I, I do wanna mention that I was. Two things. One. It's difficult. It's difficult when, um. I think, and, and, and I wasn't sure, I'm not, I'm still not entirely sure what to do here. Um, the application that we were presented with last month has, has been changed. In terms of the number of buildings that are being proposed and the square footages of the buildings that are being proposed. Uh, the locations and the sizes of those buildings, um. And so, I struggled, uh, with even deciding whether or not this would could be considered the same application, or if it needed to be considered, um, a new application, because. Um, it is substantially different from what we were presented with a month ago. However, um. In the spirit of reviewing it and, and sort of unpacking all the pieces of the application. Um, I decided that we would continue with the review, um, as it was, um, presented, even though it is a substantially different application. Um, and truthfully, we should have. When we, you know, we should have. Unsubmitted that one and then resubmitted this one, because everything flows from, um, the permit application process in terms of. Square footage, um, even the cost of the permit is different, so, um, that's issue number one. Issue number two, uh, and I'm gonna address this right up front before we even start talking about large scale development. Um, I believe, um, several of us have had conversations prior to this meeting, and I've spoken at length with CEO. Um, regarding the application and. And how, and how to, um. How to classify the uses of the proposed application. And I think that's where we really need to start. Um, last week, um, when we, um, asked the question, because there wasn't great documentation in the permit application itself, about what the. Were gonna be for these new proposed buildings. The answer we received was that there was going to be some retail space in one of the new buildings, along with some, uh, residential, uh, apartment. Space above, uh, in one of those buildings, and then there'd be some shop space. So, looking back at the, uh, land use, uh, table that we have, um, for that district. Um. We have to classify the use in the use table somehow. Uh, and as you read from, uh, the narrative that we asked, um, Bucky to submit. Um. There's this debate about how to classify the use and whether it is a light manufacturing use or not a light manufacturing use. So I'd like to start the conversation there, and I'm gonna just prefix it a little bit, uh, by saying that. Um, while I appreciate the fact that in common language, um, the activities that, um, Coastal Boat Works engages in. On their site are not manufacturing. In the common Webster's dictionary definition of the word. We're not using that as the definition. We have to use the definitions that are provided to us under the land use ordinance. Specifically, we have to classify the use in order to grant a permit. If we can't classify the use. Land use ordinance directs us. To deny the permit. So. There cannot be a proposal for a building or an expansion of a building that doesn't have a use associated with it. That's point number one. Point number two is that, um, while there's no. Manufacturing happening, the only definition, uh, that I believe applies to. The use of shop in particular and warehouse secondarily is light manufacturing. Uh, and I believe that that is the place that we have to start by looking at that definition and, um. And I'd like to open up the discussion at this point, and, and I'd like to know if any of the other planning board members have had an opportunity. Uh, to review the uses and particularly that definition, or any other definition of use that you do think may or may not apply. And I'll open it up to the planning board members first, and then I'd like to hear from, um, the CEO. So, does anybody have anything?
I mean, I. Light manufacturing in the, in the books. We went over that last, last time, and that's where this fell into, was according to the, to the, um. The land use ordinance, that it just fell into last land to the light manufacturing. Is that correct? Is that what we determined?
I'm sorry, when are you, when are you referring to?
Well, when we were reviewing this last week, uh, last month. We.
I don't think we even got that far, to be honest.
No. Okay. Um. I think we did have some discussion about that. Um, mistaken.
So, um, again, I apologize. I've got several screens. The, the definition for light manufacturing, actually, let's, 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 let's back up just a little bit first. Um, if you have your land use ordinance in front of you. Um, flip to the, uh, the, the land use table, which I believe is on page, uh. Oh goodness, one sixteen, is it one sixteen, one twenty?
One sixteen, the district's.
One sixteen, right? Okay, so, um, the Coastal Boat Works property is in District D. Um. And following, um, that li- the, the list of, um, uses following that column, District D, down through the use table. Um. Retail service establishment is a special exception under District D. Um, that would be, that would qualify for the retail use. The apartment is permitted is a yes in District D. And light manufacturing, medium manufacturing are both special exceptions. And then if we go back up. To definitions, uh, specifically the definition for light manufacturing. Which is on page twenty-one. It says an industrial or manufacturing use, which by its nature does not require extensive heavy equipment or bulk onsite raw pro- raw materials to operate. Light manufacturing includes, but is not limited to. Having great research facilities, printing or publishing, warehousing. Wholesale and storage.
A little light, you know? I looked in this morning, said.
I'm sorry, is someone talking? Building material storage, general contractors' offices and associated equipment.
The waters are like falling out of the trees. Not yet. It cracks me up when they do that. I, I busted that.
I'll keep this near to his, uh.
No.
Thank. Alright, I'm sorry. I'm going to.
Yeah.
I'm gonna mute all.
Henry, we're not in the hut.
Okay. Just raise your hand when you wanna say something, and I'll try and recognize you and unmute you. Um. Number seven was retail fuel distribution facilities, sales of bulk building and construction material. Number nine is trade shops, including cabinetry, carpentry, plumbing, electrical finish work and related exterior equipment storage for those uses. Number ten is assembly or production of goods or products. And number eleven, uh, says it shall not include uses defined as heavy or medium manufacturing uses. So. Here's the conundrum. That is literally the only use in the use table that would. Um, apply to the, the shop or the warehousing or storage uses, um, that are being applied for, and. And if we follow that through a little bit further, and we go back to page one. Hold on a minute. On page one twenty-three. At the top of the page, item number seven, where it talks about setbacks. It talks about manufacturing str- manufacturing str- um, structures, and it talks about the, um, item seven B along US Route One for manufacturing structures and their parking. The setback shall be two hundred feet from the center line of Route One. For all other lots, front yard setbacks, so and so, and so and so. That's the, that's the central issue, I think, at the moment that we either, um, have, that we have to deal with first before we move forward, um, and, and in processing the application, so. I'm. Based on what this is saying, I, I, I'll be, I'll be completely frank. I don't see how to get around the standard. There's no, there's nowhere in the administration section of the ordinance that allows the planning board the authority to waive that standard. There's no way to reduce it. Uh, there's no way to get rid of it, uh, that I know of. I. I've looked through all the definitions of all the other, uh, uses in the use table that could potentially apply. Um, a marina, we do define a marina. Unfortunately, we define a marina as being something that's on. The water. It's on, on a piece of property that's right on the water. It's in shoreline, which this clearly is not. Um. I don't know, there's no other mechanism in the land use table that even allows for storage or warehousing that doesn't include a light manufacturing definition. That's the only one. So if you're gonna be doing storage, warehousing, that's, that's where it exists in the land use ordinance. And at the moment. And then at the moment, that's where we are, and I'd love to have, I'd love to hear other input. Um, Ken, do you have anything to add to this, or Nick? Hold on a minute, Ken. Let me unmute you. Oh my God. Just a second. I'm sorry, everyone, I'm. This is. How do I unmute? There. Can you hit that button now, Ken, to unmute?
Done.
There you go.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, and I guess what my question is, does the new ordinance make a path for that?
Does the new ordinance make a path for the application?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so. I mean, I, I, I can't be prepared to, you know, pass a judgment. Obviously, the planning board would have to review it after the first. However, I took the, uh, the application as presented, and I ran it through the new code out of curiosity to see how it would fit and if the uses would apply. Um, and there, there is, I believe, a very clear path. It would require going to the planning board to ask for, um, a waiver of the setback. Uh, sorry, not the planning board, the Board of Appeals to ask for a variance. Um, and there's a, a very clear definition in the new code that talks about, um, not undue hardship, but, um, site. Um. I can't remember the exact term. Hold on a minute, I can find it. Nick, did you have something you wanted to add while I'm looking that up? Uh, hold on a minute, Nick.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
So I'm just. So the proposed building number five, that doesn't apply to this two hundred foot setback. If, if I'm, if, and, um. And the, the, to propose addition to the existing building, the twenty-four by forty addition, that doesn't. Apply. It would just be the, the, uh, twenty by twenty-four building and the. The forty by eighty building with the retail and apartment. So there's two buildings that, that, that aren't affected by this two hundred foot setback. Is that correct? I mean, I, I don't have a, I know we got scale one. I don't have my scale rule on me here, or ruler. And this is, it's from the center line of Route One. But I'm just wondering how, what, you know, how far are these two buildings encroaching into that setback?
George, hold on a second. Let me get you. Go for it.
Okay, uh. Actually, uh. I, you know, I think that all of the buildings, existing ones and proposed are all either in the two hundred, uh, foot setback. Uh, or just on the edge of it, um, the one furthest away, uh, the proposed building furthest away. Uh, is right at the edge of two hundred, uh, foot setback. So basically, the entire property. In other words, with the two hundred foot setback, he really can't do anything here at all. And, and actually, that's, that's the basis of the issue. Uh, it's like, you know, what can, uh, a home, what can a property owner do with a, uh, highly restrictive ordinance like this? The, uh. Also, uh, the changes, if you know, too, I, I noticed that you had said earlier, uh, was substantial changes. Uh, the building, the one of the apartment and the retail, that's basically the same, exactly the same. It, uh, but there's a reduction in, um, square footages. Uh, toward the back and the entire impact in general is less. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah.
Apart from that, I think that the word industrial, light industrial would work better than light manufacturing, because manufacturing is something very specific. But that's something for ordinance review. Uh, that's, that, that's something for ordinance review later on, you know, just changing the linguistics, I guess. Um, those are my thoughts, uh, so far. Um, I understand that, uh, it's a difficult. Um, situation to try to review something that doesn't have a clear definition within the zoning ordinance.
Yep. Um, I'm just looking down real quick here for. Industrial. The. Way that the, um, current land use ordinance, um, uses or defines industrial is mixed. We have, um, a district, um, called light industrial. Um, and then the terms and definitions of industrial and manufacturing, if you look them up, they're cyclical, cyclical. In other words, they self-reference each other.
I'm aware of this. I'm just saying that it's actually just changing the semantics, you know, to say, rather than if the question comes up. You know, to say, rather than if the question comes up about whether it's manufacturing, well, there's no manufacturing going on, but light industrial in fact. Does, is more inclusive in general. Just a thought, anyway. Not sure if that helps us at the moment.
This is, the scale, the scale is one inch equals 80 feet.
Yeah, if you have it printed at 24 by 36, that's correct, it should say right on the document.
It says scale one inch equals 80 feet, so.
Sure, if you have it printed at the right side.
I'm looking at this and thinking. That that new proposed building is, is. It's greater than two and a half inches away from. What is, what is designated, where Route 1 is from the center of Route 1. So I can't see how that building is affected by the 200-foot setback, if this scale is correct.
By that observation, you're right.
I mean, that's, the, there's no other way to observe it if this is to scale.
Yeah, well, it is to scale, you know, the questions are where does the step setback start from?
Well, it says from the center of Route 1.
Okay, then you're correct. Okay.
So. So that, so that one building is. That's not affected by it.
Yeah, it should be fine.
And so the, in the. And I'm not having a ruler handy to me here, I can't say that that proposed expansion is. To me, it looks like it's. It's. Either on the cusp or beyond the, that 200 feet. So the only two buildings that seem to be affected by this is that new retail apartment space and this. 20 by 24 building, which I don't know what the purpose of that one is, it doesn't say, it says approved building. So that, that's. That's just my, you know, builder's observation, that those two buildings appear to me to be outside the. That 200 feet limit, if the new code. Provides a path. Like you said, to, through a waiver.
So.
Seems like you're. You know.
The, okay, so variances and waivers, right? The way that the land use ordinance that we have in front of us works is unless it specifically says. That a reviewing authority such as the CEO, the planning board or the Board of Appeals can modify or waive. You know, a standard, unless it specifically says that, then, then you just simply can't. So then the next option available is to apply for a variance. Under the land use ordinance. We only have one type of variance. State law provides for several different types, we only choose, chose to incorporate one of them. In the, in the land use ordinance, which is the undue hardship variance. Very, very difficult to prove, you have to, basically, there's. Four criteria, you have to meet all of them. I've never heard of one actually getting approved, they're very hard. However, in the new code. We also provide for what's called a practical difficulty variance. Where if the site conditions are such that the proposed use or building can't be. Done because of topography or other conditions, not of the applicant's making. They can get and apply for and receive a variance under this practical difficulty variance, which would allow the Board of Appeals. To modify setback, frontage and other dimensional requirements in order to process the permit application. We don't have that available to us currently under the land insurance ordinance, but it would be available under the new code.
So there's no sense, there's no. I don't know, I, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud.
Can I offer a thought? I'm wondering if the building. Closest to the road, the one that's in question, has retail and an apartment. Currently, the office exists in the building that has the little expansion to it. I wonder if the office were to change over to that building that's closest to the road, if we essentially redefine the use of that building. You know. Now it's retail, apartment and office rather than. Light industrial or manufacturing, if in fact, those functions don't take place there.
It'd be re- retail, office and.
And apartment above.
Apartment above.
Yeah.
In the one closest to the big 40 by 80, which is building number.
Yeah, I think it's five.
Six.
Six.
Building number six. And what's, what's this little 20 by 24 building, what's the use on that?
My understanding is that that building had been approved to a plan that had been submitted prior. And I don't know much about the history of that, except that, that the use of that building, my understanding is for like package drop off. You know, for deliveries.
Hold on a second, Bucky, let me get you, I gotta unmute you. On, oh shoot, hold on. Do you see that? No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, yep, good, thank you.
So a couple of things, um, the property that I have is, a portion of that is in shoreline zone. Where the old Sherman Lake came up around the corner. I don't know if that makes any kind of difference. Also, that 20, to clarify things, the 20 by 24 little building was approved in 2006. It was part of the original proposal, we're gonna have a little two-car garage or something there. So, and then they were, they also, also approved a little.
Bucky, hold on a second, I'm having trouble hearing you, it sounds like your mic is maybe cutting in and out.
Yeah, I think that Bucky's on Southport Island and I don't think he gets great reception.
Okay. Let's just wait for it to catch up for a quick second.
Anyway, um, I don't know if you heard me.
No, it's difficult.
George, can you hear me?
Bucky, I can hear you a little bit. You know, maybe we could conduct your comments. If you want to text me comments, then I can represent you, cause I, I'm getting pretty good reception where I am. At least. Do you wanna try that?
So Ben, can you hear me?
Yes, Nick, I can hear you.
So if this building.
I can hear you.
This building is already approved. So that's, if it's already approved and it's was. I don't know how it got approved in, in. That zone, but it did. So that's, if that's already approved, that's not part of this application.
Right.
It's not, it's not built yet, but it's already been approved, so it's not part of this application. And it sounds like the.
Well.
Am I, am I, am I wrong? If it's already approved.
Unfortunately. Doesn't matter, you, you have, you have one year from the date of the permit being signed. To begin substantial construction. If you don't begin substantial construction, the permit lapses.
So, so approved, so that building is not approved then?
It would have to be re-approved. In order to construct it.
Okay, that, that clarifies what I.
Ken, can, can you just verify that?
Yeah, everything has a one-year time period to have substantial instruction, which is also up to, that's up to question too. Because substantial construction could be different for different people, some people put a value on it, a numerical value on it. Could be 50% of the value of the building, but that does not include labor and all that stuff, it's mostly just the materials. And that came from.
I'm still wondering what I'd like, what I'd like to find out is if we just did a roy with building. I am, and everybody here?
Yep.
Nice. Anyway, so. If we could verify that the addition on the back of building one was outside of the 200 feet. And if we could just eliminate for now, building six. Could I get approval still to grade that hill down? And be able to park boats on that property or storage, boat storage also in the 200-foot setback?
Let me, give me just a second here. Does anybody have any, does anybody have anything for that, I'm, I'm flipping through. Alright, so I'm going down the column, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna kinda talk it out as I'm, as I'm kinda processing here what you're, what you're asking, Bucky. Again, I'm back on page 116, I'm looking at the use table and I'm following District D down the column. Dwelling, mobile home, apartment, condominiums, accessory buildings. Home occupation, bed and breakfast, agriculture, forest and timber. Community and public buildings. It's not a. Professional offices. We don't have a separate. Use in, in this land use ordinance for outdoor storage of anything.
Seems to me.
Hi Kevin.
Seems to me the closest we have is, is the light manufacturing, where part of the definition is warehousing. Which isn't, clearly isn't exactly what you're doing when you're storing boats. But there isn't any, any use. Which is called storage.
Am I grandfathered by any means because I'm storing boats up to the 50-foot setback now?
What was the question, I missed part of it?
Am I grandfathered under any clause because I'm storing boats now within the 50-foot setback?
So. I, I kinda, I follow that chain of logic through as well. There's no, there's no specific grandfathering of, of a use unless the ordinance changes. And you had a prior existing use that would in some way be modified, then you would receive a grandfathering. Since we're processing, processing it under the same ordinance which you obtained your first permit from. There's no grandfathering that, that could be applied to the, to the use. And technically, the way that permits work is you have to process each permit on the basis of its own. Meaning even though you received a permit for your current use. Whether you receive that permit legally, not legally, but if the use that you got the permit for was legal by definition of the land use ordinance or not. You're engaged in the use, but technically you would now be considered a non-conforming use, which is ridiculous. But that's where we are, because there is no, there's no way to say that the, the law does not allow one permit. To set a precedent for subsequent permits, even if it's the same owner on the same lot. Engaged in the same activity. Meaning that the granting of a permit cannot and does not change the law. The law of the, the law of Newcastle in terms of the land use ordinance. Has to be interpreted for each individual permit application, regardless of what came before.
Okay, so then do I actually even need a permit because I've been doing it on that 14 acres the whole time? But I guess my question would still be, it, can I grade that hill down that's been. An eyesore for me for years? Or do I need a permit to actually do grading?
Hold on just a second.
Yeah, I had to permit to clear it.
Okay, so. See. Nick or Peter or David, can one of you remember where the, where the language about earth moving is in the current land use ordinance?
Not right now, I'm trying to scale this drawing to find the center of Route 1.
Ben, I'm looking on, on the web and I, on page 15, I can see something says earth moving. Any change to the ground caused by individuals or entities. To improved or unimproved real estate. Or any other activity that results in a change to the character, contours or topography of the property. Alright, that's all just, that's just defining earth moving.
Contours of topology, earth, earth moving, also includes alteration of a public private right-of-way road or driveway. Where does that come into play? Under shoreline. It comes into play under the uses under shoreline in the land use table for shoreline, which is on page 139, but it doesn't apply in the situation.
Even though a portion of my property is in shoreline?
It would have to be the portion that is in shoreline, because shoreline is technically an overlay.
Okay.
It, it seems that in this case, it's just a matter of what you're asking for, it's just a matter of grading. You know, a piece of property, which is a completely different thing, you know, the use of it and what you choose to do with it after you've graded it. You know, can be part of the discussion, but really that's all there is, there must be, and I'm not as familiar with the Newcastle ordinance as I used to be, but. There must be a portion of the ordinance that covers. Disturbance of land, land use. Activities, just, you know, even if there's not a building associated with that.
There is, I can. I'm still trying to scale the center of Route 1 here.
This, this building is. I have just the tip of this is, I maybe just added. Is it the center of that?
Anywhere near.
Okay, it's starting to come to me, I think, I think we have to follow it through the definition of construction and structure. The definition of construction is on page 14, which includes any change caused by individuals or entities to improved or unimproved real estate. Including but not limited to the construction of buildings or other structures. The construction of additions or substantial improvements to buildings or other structures, mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving. Excavation, drilling operations or storage of equipment or materials. And the storage of blah, 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 but that. Definition covers it, so.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, it's on page 14, the definition for construction.
Any change caused by individuals or entities to improved or unimproved real estate. Including but not limited to the construction of buildings or other structures, the construction of additions. Or substantial improvements to buildings or other structures. Mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving, excavation. Drilling operations or storage of equipment or materials and the storage. Disposition or extraction of materials. disposition or extraction of materials. Public or private sewage disposal systems or water supplies facilities. That's def- definition of construction. For the, for the land use ordinance.
Thank you.
So just as a.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
No, but I go, go ahead, Nick. I'm still looking for something.
Well, this is, I'm just, so I'm just going by this. I have the, the full scale drawing here that I picked up to the town hall. And I'm going by the eighty, one inch equals eighty feet scale. And I've laid out the center line of Route one. Route one is basically in the front of that is five eight, so five sixteenths, you know, Route one is five eighths wide. I'm, and I'm going by what runs right in front of the property. So five sixteenths, which is I've laid out, equals the center line of Route one. And, um, the existing building right now is from the front corner where the light is. It's two and, you know, it's i- it's two and three sixteenths. It'd have to be two and a half to be eighty, to be two hundred feet. Where the new addition goes is basically two and three eighths. It would have to be two and a half. Uh, the, the building number five, where that is, is it's, um, one, two, three, it's, you know, five sixteenths. So that's well, the building number five seems well beyond the two hundred foot setback. According to the scale on this full-size drawing. But the, uh, proposed expansion doesn't fall within that, which doesn't mean if you and I you know, put that addition on the backside of that building. I don't know if the existing building can't fall within that two hundred feet or the new structure. But in that, but the that little twenty-four, twenty by twenty-four is, you know, that's that's like an inch and a quarter. That's not, that doesn't fit anywhere and, and that's about the same for the new proposed building. That's an inch and a quarter, which would be, you know, eighty, a hundred feet. Well, I, I'm just trying to clarify the numbers for all these structures. Where I lack in other things, I make up for in a measuring tape.
So, uh, thank you, thank you, Nick. Um, at the top of page nine. Oh, sorry, David, let me get you unmuted here real quick. You see something on your screen there? Yep.
Yeah, you're just getting back to the construction paragraph. I mean, everything in that paragraph doesn't need to be permitted. You don't need to get a permit to get a well. So does he need a permit to knock that hill off?
So at the top of page nine, it says, yeah, if a permit or approval is required under this ordinance for any structure or use. A person may not begin construction or earth moving in preparation for construction or use prior to obtaining that permit or approval. The following earth moving activities shall be allowed without a permit. But they are things like agriculture, um, gardening, landscaping and, um, you know, uh, repair of, uh, existing public or private way.
Yep.
And I feel like we've been down this road before, um, and the definition of structure factored into it somehow and I'm I'm headed there now. No, I'm thinking of something else, sorry.
Did you say what page you found that information on? Cause that was actually very clear definition that you just read.
It's top of page nine.
It's part of page eight, the bottom of page eight and top of page nine.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I read, the way I read that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the way I read that is you're, you're not allowed to basically you're not allowed to engage in earth moving or construction of any kind. Um, unless you, um, get a permit for a specific use first.
Ben.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, um, anyway, to clear that lot, um, so I'm still fuzzy about um, I own fourteen acres. I'm storing boats there now all over the place. Um, I need more boat storage. But I need a permit to make more boat storage, but it's not allowed or it's not in the definition outside storage. So by that definition, I'm not allowed?
I, I believe that's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
I believe that under, under, under the strict definition of, of the current land use ordinance. You have uses now that you're engaging. I'm sorry, Nick, what?
I'd just like to interrupt here. Um, so, uh, when you just read the topic, it's not, the two type of earth moving in the, under the bullet points, A there. Any type of earth moving that is part of the normal agricultural forestry or land management practices. And then you look up land management road. Uh, a road or track consisting of a bed of exposed mineral soil, gravel or other surface in which is constructed for created by the passage of motorized vehicles and primarily for timber harshing and related activities, including associated log yards. I guess that's just, that's a total, that land management means, that's just a forestry deal. So I, I just wanted to take that bullet point all the way through to the end. Under the definitions.
Sure.
There is a land management road. Excuse me for interrupt.
Go ahead.
No.
Bucky, did you?
I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify, um, so there's an ordinance in two thousand seventeen. That says, and it's the, I guess I'm a little fuzzy now, Ben. So the two thousand seventeen ordinance that was passed for the, um, ten thousand square foot and above. Is that what's kicking this two hundred, uh, foot setback into?
Are you talking about, um, large-scale development?
Yeah.
No.
Is that gonna kick me out anyway?
Yeah, so that, we're not even talking about large-scale development. Large-scale development was adopted. I'll be honest, I don't know when that portion of the on, of the ordinance was adopted. I do know it was before seventeen, though. It was some, it was, it was sometime, I think between two thousand, two thousand and ten. I, I just don't know when exactly. Unfortunately, when we update the ordinance, we don't keep a, a record of exactly what was updated and when it was updated.
So remind me again then, cause I'm fuzzy, what the two hundred foot setback, what ordinance that applies to?
So that's basically just under the um, the language on page, I think it's one thirty?
That was under the, under the, um, light manufacturing.
Well, that's what, yeah, so, right. But if you go to read under, um, District D.
What's allowed under that district? And, um, none of what I'm doing is allowed unless undesignedated light manufacturing and under that light manufacturing, it's a two hundred foot setback.
That's correct.
So that's so under that ordinance is, um, even if, is boat storage allowed?
Yes. It is permitted under light manufacturing.
But does it have to be two hundred feet back also?
Along Route one, yes.
Okay. Um, so I don't know where to go from here. I don't want this meeting to last forever. It's um, if I'm gonna get kicked out by the ten thousand square foot, um, anyway, um, we should probably stop here. I guess I don't know if you wanna just approve building five so that I could have a storage building. Um, and maybe verify if George or I had a survey survey or verify the center of St. Route one to the corner of that building of Route, of building one that I wanna put an expansion on. Um, I could verify that that's outside of the two hundred feet. Is there any allowance is, if there isn't, um, like Nick was, I think, leading to, if it was a hundred and ninety feet, could you give me a ten-foot leeway or do I have to get a variance?
Um, okay, so part of the answer to your question and, and is gonna rest on, um, excuse me, uh, following the breadcrumb of, uh, non-conformance all the way through. Because technically what you'd be doing is you'd be expanding a non-conforming building. The question is whether or not the expansion of the non-conforming building is done in a manner that is more or less non-conforming. And whether or not that would be allowed. And I haven't followed that through all the way, but the language that we wanna look for in specific regard to the expansion of building. What number is it?
It was the first building right there.
Building one?
Yes, sir.
So that would, because that falls within the two hundred feet. Or a portion of it falls within the two hundred feet. You, you have to follow the breadcrumb of non-conformity and, and I'm just there now. I think it starts on page one thirty.
Okay, so, um, everyone keeps referring me back to the new code coming January first. And, uh, um, I don't know, I don't know whose advice to seek to figure out how I can could ever do anything that I wanna do under that new code. I know, um, Ken had tried to tell me that I have to be denied first to be able to get a, um, an appeal. But anyway, I'm not sure which road to go down now. It's so confusing.
Okay, so under the new code, just to flesh that out for you real quick, um, you'll look on page eighty-seven. Of the new code, not the current land use ordinance, and it's under the variance. Under variance, section D, there's something called a practical difficulty variance. Uh, and it says on item four that the board may grant a practical difficulty variance when it finds that the conditions exist. The need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general condition of the neighborhood. The granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of abutting properties. Practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the petitioner or a prior owner. No other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner. The granting of a variance will not unreasonably adverse adversely affect the natural environment. Property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreline areas as described. Desirable relief couldn't be granted without causing substantial detrimental to the public good without nullifying or substantially derogatory from the purpose and purpose of a specific district in this code or ordinance in general. So you could apply for a variance from the Board of Appeals and claim undue, uh, practical difficulty because your site conditions are such that you can't expand very much to meet your needs because you have crazy topography.
Correct.
Crazy topography.
Correct.
And in doing so, you can, you can propose that you need to put the buildings where you need to put them because that's the only place that they can be put to meet the needs of your expansion. And the board has the ability to then waive.
The two hundred and fifty foot setback, whatever.
Let me find the exact language here. It would be the Board of Appeals. And the way I understand this procedure, you wouldn't even need to go to the CEO or to the board, to the planning board. You would actually file directly with the Board of Appeals for the variance first.
Okay, and then come back to the planning board?
And then either come back to the planning board.
Be denied first, Ben?
Not under the new code. No, not for this.
That's strange because if you're, what are you appealing if you didn't get denied?
No, it's not that you're appealing something. It's that you're directly asking for a variance.
On page eighty, are you on page eighty-seven, Ben?
Correct.
Yeah.
Ken, you're absolutely right as it pertains to the current land use ordinance.
Yeah. Well, that'll take me a while to get used to.
If anything can shoot me down, then I'm not sure.
So Ben, do I have to apply, if you guys deny me tonight? Do I take this whole plan and try to get it appealed?
So, so there's a couple of paths for, for you to take or a couple of options that could happen tonight. You could withdraw the application. That's option number one and resubmit it under the new code, January first. You could, um, the, uh, the, the board could, uh, vote and, uh, deny the application and then you could file an appeal with the Board of Appeals. That would, that process would happen under the current land use ordinance, not under the new code. Uh, so the Board of Appeals would have to follow the, the land use ordinance that we're talking about tonight, not the new code. Or, uh, let's see, I guess those are the, those are really the only two good options at the moment.
Okay, so which is easier, the new code appeal? Get denied or do I have to re-submit my whole application and get denied? If I withdraw my application now?
Sounds like if you withdraw your application now, you don't have to reapply. You have to just go directly to the appeals under the new code.
For a variance. And then once they grant you that practical difficulty variance and modify the requirements for setback and frontage or whatever it is that you need to do your original proposal. All, you know, all your buildings or whatever, then you would follow, once you get that approval from the Board of Appeals, then you would follow the normal permitting process for what it is you wanna do. That may involve going just to the CEO. It may involve going to, uh, the planning board.
Okay. Yeah, then I lose my thirty-two hundred dollars.
Well, hold on just a second. Peter, um, Peter McNauton, you had your hand up.
No, just, just saying that under the new ordinance, uh, he also falls under Marina dry storage. Which is exactly what he does. Though at least what he's doing is defined as opposed to. So at least what he's doing is defined as opposed to what we have right now where it doesn't fall under anything.
We have definitions for outdoor storage, Marina dry storage, um, retail, um. Uh, heavy, I believe, or retail.
General.
General, um, and those are all permitted in the district that you're in. Um. Another, another potential avenue for you under the new code is the, um. Is to follow the path of nonconformity, um, that's outlined in the new code. Which would allow you to expand all of your buildings, um. Twice as much, basically, is what they are now.
But I have to meet the setback?
No.
That's where you get the variance.
No.
So if I get the variance, I wouldn't have to meet the setback?
That's correct.
Okay. So I, I, have you set the new fees yet for?
Uh, the planning board doesn't set the fees, the Board of Selectmen sets the fee schedule and they have been working on it, it's not quite done.
Okay, so the thirty one fifty, according what I read, the ordinance, I lose them.
Hold on just a second. Kevin, Kevin had his hand up real quick, Bucky, just a second. Um, can you unmute yourself, Kevin, or?
And so, just, just for reference, I made a, I was fiddling around with Google Earth and I've created a screen capture I could share that shows the two hundred foot. Line back from the center line of Route One. That would be helpful.
Go for it, share it.
Now I can't see it. You see it. What do you see?
This is during processing, screen sharing.
Started it.
Oh.
There it is.
You see that? So. The yellow line. That goes through building.
That's Building One. That's exactly, that's exactly what my staring.
That was the back corner.
Yeah, but maybe parted the building, I think.
We didn't do it illegal, anything.
I don't know, when, in two thousand six, it was only fifty foot setback, yeah.
Well, they still haven't answered your question.
So. The bookkeeper next to me, Ben, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we lose our thirty one hundred and fifty dollars?
So. Kevin, thank you for that. Um, could you, just a second, could you um, save that and um, send it to the board? And to, and to, Bucky, just respond to the email that went to everybody. Thank you.
Google Earth.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm gonna leave it up to you whether or not you, you wanna formally request a withdrawal or if you'd like us to proceed with the application. First.
I, I guess I'm still asking my bookkeeper standing here kicking my shin saying, what happens to the thirty one hundred and fifty bucks?
All right, so, the way that it works right now, um, and this is changing, um. Because it's in process of being discussed how it's gonna work. Again, we don't set it, it's the Board of Selectmen that does. But the current process is that we collect the application and permit fees uh, upfront and they are non-refundable.
Okay. So I know that going in at least, so if I, if I pull my application tonight, um. I just have to. Bring that to the appeal board. And I don't do that to, with the CEO. Or you, I appeal directly to them?
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct. So. I think at this, at this time, um, Bucky, if, if you don't want to, um. With formally withdraw the application, or is that what you wanna do?
I don't know, I'm.
I have a question, um.
George, go ahead.
What, what can be reviewed currently now? What Bucky has in front of you right now? Like what can we, what can we accomplish this evening?
All right, so, I mean, here's, here's the thing. An application has to be considered complete under the, under the current land use ordinance, the way it works is that we have to deem the application. First complete, then we have to review it for compliance, that's what we talked about last month. So changing the parameters of the review in the middle of the permit review application technically makes it. A null application, because then it's a different application. So we can't say, we'll approve this part of it, but not that part of it. The whole application has to go up or down, because it has to be considered complete first, our checklist is for. So, another avenue for you, another avenue for you is to withdraw this application. Rework it into something else and resubmit it. And then we could process that and determine whether it was complete and then review it for compliance. Any application that's reef, okay, so, any application that's received, received at the town office. Before January first is processed under the land use ordinance. You would. So. We got some noise going on here. So, what I'd like to, what I'd like to do is I'd, I'd like to clear up the, the matter of the application before we address the matter of the fee. So. We didn't need to have a motion from the, a member of the planning board about something to do with the application now. Or we need to hear, you know, from the applicant that they wanna formally make a motion to withdraw the application, but I think something at this point needs to happen. Uh, one or the other, so. I would entertain a motion from someone.
Ben, can I just ask one more question again, if, if. Do I, do I have to be denied tonight in order to go to the appeal?
If you wanna go to the Board of Appeals under the current application?
No, no, under the new application.
Then no, you don't.
I, I just don't understand how that works, because I, I already know under the new application. That it can, I, I can't do it because of the setbacks. So I'm asking for a variant for specific things like the two hundred foot setback.
That's it, go ahead, George.
Okay, so, uh, on, on Bucky's behalf, I'm, I'm wondering if, if, uh, we continue with this application, it's, it's going to be denied. Based on circumstances, um. But he has uh, thirty bucks invested uh, in the process thus far. Uh, if he's rejected tonight, um, can he then go to the Board, uh, the Board of Appeals? With that rejection to uh, get it overturned or would you have to submit a whole application app?
He does have the option available to receive a denial from the planning board and then appeal it to the current. Board of Appeals under the current application, under the current application fee. It would then have to be reviewed by the Board of Appeals under the same land use ordinance. Now, I cannot speak for the Board of Appeals, but what I can tell you is this. They're not gonna have any greater or different authority than the planning board has to waive a standard, unless it specifically. Allows them to in the land use ordinance.
And as the land use ordinance stands now, uh, is it your understanding? That is outlined, because you read an outline that sounded like he would have the ability to do it, but maybe that's in. The change.
That's in the new code.
I see, so actually then it would benefit him to uh, withdraw and resubmit.
I believe, I believe the simplest path forward is to withdraw the application. And resubmit it under. We're getting a lot of noise here, who's, who's mic is still on?
Uh, it's David. Uh, David, I think it's.
Sorry here. David, I'm just gonna mute you real quick. Sorry about that.
So how do I formally, do I formally remove my application?
You just have to say that you make a motion to formally remove your application, that's it.
Okay, I make a motion to formally remove my application. And after January first, I'll, I'll try to get a variance.
So, thank you, um. At, the, the motion's been made by the applicant to withdraw the application, um, so, is there any discussion on the. Um, from the planning board members before we vote, um, to allow the applicant to remove, to withdraw the application? All in favor of withdrawing the application?
Thanks, Nick.
Due to, due to the circumstances of the timing of the application. The old code going out, the new code coming in, um, and the circumstances of this district and this. Parcel of land in particular and its. Already existing uses. Um, considering all of that, I'd like to make the motion that the planning board recommend to the Board of Selectmen to refund. The permit fee and application fee that the applicant paid. For the current application that he just withdrew.
I'd like to second that.
So I make that motion, do I have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of recommending to the Board of Selectmen to refund the applicant's permit fee? Alright, so. We will, thank you, that passes.
Thank you.
So, w- we will notify the Board of Selectmen that we've made that recommendation, um, unanimously. And then it is up to them, the planning board does not have the authority to directly, um, accept or return funds, only the selectmen do. Um, but, they have our recommendation, so. Alright, I think at this time. We have, I've lost my agenda, there it is. That's it for the agenda, unless there's anyone has any public comments for items that are not on the agenda?
I'd just like to thanks.
Seeing none, and. Go ahead, Nick.
No, I just wanted to thank Bucky for being, um. Understanding and reasonable, I suspected some other people were starting to throw stuff at us.
No, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, so, without objection, I'm going to, uh. Adjourn the meeting.
Alright.
How do I get out of this thing anyway?
Let's just leave. I'm gonna end it. I'll see you all later. Have a good night. Bye.